Good evening, welcome to the June 24th, 2025 Michigan City Area Schools Board of Trustees Monthly Meeting. We now please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mission statement, please.
We are a diverse community of families, students and staff who take pride in our schools, contribute positively to society and prepare students for lifelong success.
Thank you. Ms. D, all board members are present in person. Now comes the time for public forum. Public forum, oh, please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be no direct interaction with the board, discussion of personnel issues, or direct or indirect verbal attacks of staff or the administration. Public forum is now open. Public forum is now open. Public forum is now open. Public forum is closed. Thank you. Next, we will go on to our consent agenda. Number one, approval of the minutes of proceeding meeting on May 27, 2025. Number two, approval of employee appointments, resignations, retirements, leave of absence and status change. Number three, approval of secretary's report on bills to be paid. Number four, approval of pay dates for May 16, 2025, May 30 of 2025, and June 13, 2025. Number five, travel reimbursement. Number six, facility fee waiver. Number seven, recommendation for employment of candidates to IC 20-26-5-11.2. And number eight, authorization to sign agreements for alternative services. How the board like to proceed?
Move to approve?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. You're good to go. At this time, we have general announcements from Dr. Wyndham McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Tonight during the consent agenda, the board approved the hire of Michelle Meadows as Director of the Laporte County Career and Technical Education Center. Please join me in welcoming Michelle. Michelle, if you'd like to say a few words, we greatly appreciate it.
Actually, thank you. I'm super excited. I'm a big fan of career and technical education. It's been my entire career, so I'm really looking forward to being a part of Michigan City Area Schools and building the CTE program and continuing the successes that you guys have already succeeded in obtaining. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have some great news to share from our athletic department. Congratulations to the following Michigan City High School student athletes on being named All-Dulwin Athletic Conference. Zaire McKinney, baseball. Mark Mills, boys volleyball. And Anne Sawyer, softball. The spring sports awards were held at the beginning of this month honoring players or athletes from boys and girls track, unified track, girls softball, boys baseball, girls tennis, boys volleyball and boys golf. Each sport honored its MVP, Sports Leadership Award and Wolf Award recipients. Congratulations to all our student athletes on a successful spring. This can be viewed on our YouTube channel at educateMC.net. The Michigan City Patriotic Parade will take place on Saturday, June 28. MCAS is registered to participate. We hope you will join us along the route or walk with us to represent our schools. The parade begins at 11:00 a.m. on Franklin Street from 10th Street to Ames Field. Following the parade, head over to Ames Field for the FISF Family Fun Day from 1:00 to 4:30 p.m. This event is free and hosted by the Michigan City Events and NFL player Braden Fiss and the Michigan City Area Schools alum. It will feature a bounce house, a dunk tank, food trucks, haircuts, raffles and more. Free school supplies will be available for Michigan City students with a school ID while supplies last. The Michigan City High School Drama Club is collaborating with Center Stage Youth Theater to present Wizard of Oz at Michigan City High School on June 27, 28 and the 29th. The Friday and Saturday performances are at 7:00 p.m. and the Sunday matinee is at 2:00 p.m. Admission is $15. A number of our younger students are in the cast while several recent graduates and high school students are working backstage in technical roles. Break late to all those who are involved. This month, 26 students from our elementary and middle school schools will compete at a two-week selling program, learning to sell through a partnership with South Shore Selling based in Michigan City. This is the second year of the partnership and we are grateful to the Selling School and the Unity Foundation for their support. Special thanks to Dale Moyer of the South Shore Selling School and to Kathy Bildhouser and Amanda Green for the coordination of this exciting opportunity for our students. A reminder that the Michigan City Area Schools is participating in the USDA Summer Feeding Program, providing nutritious lunches and breakfasts at no cost to all who are under 18 at locations across the community. A complete list of service locations, dates and times is available on our website. The citywide back-to-school rally will be held on Saturday, August 9th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Elston Gilfield. This free family event will feature school supplier distribution activities, exhibit booths, immunizations and more. Unfortunately, no dunk tank, so Mr. Corley, you did get away with that. Maybe we might have some new activities, pie throwing contest or something like that. That might, that might be great. A community school supply will take place in conjunction with the back-to-school rally and will run from July 1st to August 5th. Donations may be dropped off at the administration building. Additional community drop-off locations will be shared online in July. For details about exhibiting, volunteering, sponsoring or donating supplies, visit educateMC.net Back-to-School Rally. And finally, the first day of school for students is Wednesday, August 13. The Returning Student Update Form is available in Power School Portal and will be available until July 1st. A complete calendar for the 2025-26 school year is available on our district website. And last, I want to highlight and recognize students who participated in our strategic plan. Last year, we invited two Michigan City High School students to join us as representatives on our strategic plan steering team. It was a new idea at the time, bringing student voice directly into our planning conversations. This year, we formed a full student, student leadership advisory council made up of 17 students from Michigan City High School who has served as thought partners and advisors to our strategic plan. The students brought energy, insight and very importantly to us as adults, honesty to every conversation. They shared their experiences, offered thoughtful feedback and played a key role in shaping our work across all five pillars of the plan. And we want you, our community, to get to know them too. So starting this month, starting June 11th and continuing each Wednesday throughout the summer, we're featuring each of our student advisors in a special spotlight series on our MCS Facebook page and on our district news section of our website. I encourage you to follow along, read their stories and celebrate the student leaders who are helping take Michigan City Area Schools to the next level. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McCullough. At this time, we go on to our business section. First item of business, Neola update, second reading. Mr. Kaminsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did not receive any questions or comments. Again, I want to make sure you understand that Lewis Kappas has been hired by Neola here in the state of Indiana to review these because they are looking at the federal stuff. Lewis Kappas looks at the state stuff and I look at it too, obviously. So I would recommend that you adopt these policies.
Have any questions from the board? Seeing no questions, what is the board's pleasure?
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and three seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Number two, approval dairy, bread, produce, grocery and supplies bid award. Ms. Medina, how you doing?
Good evening, Board, Admin. My name is Camille Medina. I'm the interim Food Service Director for Michigan City Area Schools and I'm here to ask the Board to approve and award the bid contracts for school year 25-26 for the following vendors that provide our dairy, bread, produce, grocery, supplies and commodity products. These providers have been board approved by our Service Center, NISC, in April 2025. Our dairy will, my recommendation is our dairy renewed with DFA and Shoals will continue to be our distributor. Shoals is locally here in Michigan City and provide great customer service. They bring us milk on a dime when we need it, so we really want to hold on to them. Commercial Food Systems was awarded the contract for snacks and beverages. They are also, well, they are here in Indiana. Gordon Food Services, HPS, is renewed for cafeteria food supplies and commodities. Alpha Baking out of Chicago will continue to be our bread supplier. Piazza Produce out of Indianapolis will continue to supply our produce. All of these vendors are renewed from last year. There were no major increases in pricing and our dairy actually went down in price. Yeah, that doesn't, you don't hear that too often. That would be my recommendation.
Any questions from the board? Seeing no questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, Ms. D. Thank you, Ms. Medina. Next item of business is middle and high school science adoption. Ms. Bildhouser.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm seeking the Board's approval for our remaining science textbook adoption for the high school, which covers the core classes biology, chemistry, physics and ICP and then also the middle school science textbooks as well. The quotes were provided in your materials. Any questions on any of those?
Anything substantive changing here between what we've had and what we've, we're looking to adopt?
No, not really. The middle school took the, they were able to pilot it over the course of the year, so they have some extensive experience with it before they made their final selection.
Excellent. I'm wildly happy that in this environment in Indiana, in Indiana, we're still adopting science textbooks, so.
I have a question. The textbook is Indiana Inspire Science. Is that like focused on Indiana science or is it?
It's aligned. Said the publisher will align them to state standards and that's what that means, that addresses a specific state standards.
Any other questions? Seeing no questions, how is, what's the board's pleasure?
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes. Thank you, Mrs. Bildhouser. Next, IXL contract. Ms. Bildhouser.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm also looking for the Board's approval as we choose to, as we look to move our formative assessment platform from iReady to IXL. The IXL platform is, would align with our K-8 students for both reading and math and it's also aligned with the new iLearn checkpoints and we'll be able to data share between the iLearn platform, the IXL platform, so that when the student scores come in, then the online learning pathway will be set to match what their instructional needs are. So we see that as a benefit to our students that will have some implications and impact on iLearn in the spring of 2026.
So we're talking real-time changes essentially to, you know, if my scores go up or my scores go down year over year, my curriculum will update? That's amazing. That's great.
I, I will just point out too, just the analytics that it'll provide the teacher to make decisions for whole class instruction, small group instruction, along with that practice in the platform.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds good. Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, how's, what's the board's pleasure?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, Ms. D. Thank you. Thank you again, Mrs. Bildhouser. Next, Ghost Kitchen. Kevin, Mr. McGuire.
Good evening. As part of your board packet, I added a couple documents regarding the Ghost Kitchen activities over at the Elston facility. Really just inform you of some of the activities and programs that are happening over there that we're trying to, to spin up. Ultimately, this will wrap underneath the NWI Works umbrella, once we have a master lease set with them, that this will be one of those programs and activities that will be going on. I wanted again to make you aware of what's going on, see if you had any questions and just keep you informed with some of those pieces. Quick definition of a Ghost Kitchen, essentially is it's, it's an empty space equipped with all of the equipment needed for chefs or food trucks, whatever it might be, that they can rent out on a regular basis. At this point, until we have the NWI Works up and running, we're going to treat it as any other facility's rental, but these are the guidelines and things that we're setting in place for anybody that will be in that. Obviously, it's going to be a little bit different than a general use gymnasium that we currently rent out regularly, so again, we anticipate hopefully in July meeting, maybe August meeting, we'll have the NWI Works, so those will wrap under that as we move forward. But we do have two individuals that are looking at utilizing the kitchen. Currently, one of them cooks out of their own kitchen and prepares meals for their husband's coworkers and has developed their own little business of, of that, so she's hoping to get started every Wednesday and preparing meals and lunches for the full week for individuals and doing it in a more commercial kitchen and obviously hopefully increase her abilities to create more meals for individuals, so. Yeah, we're excited about the opportunity. One of the big, big programs that we'll be operating. I should mention right now because the Elston Kitchen, specifically the upstairs behind on the old middle school kitchen, is not being utilized by CTE. That's the kitchen that we're going to start in. We are working on ways to improve the basement kitchen and the coolers in the basement and do some updates down there before we move. All of those activities we anticipate will be in the AK Smith Basement Kitchen moving forward. But again, to start, we'll be utilizing the Elston Kitchen. Questions?
Is this open to the public then?
It is, yes. And that was another reason to bring it tonight because we do want the public to be aware. Certainly, the more people, the more often we get that rented out, the better for all of us. We are, I also want to mention, we are kind of following the Indy, Indy's Kitchen program. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a program, very successful program that's been running down in Indianapolis for several years, I want to say 12 to 15 years. So we kind of are modeling our program after what they offer down there. So if you're interested, that's another great spot to find some more information. If anybody in the community is interested, that's what we're going to model after and that's indieskitchen.com.
Awesome. And do they have to have any credentials before they can use our?
They do. So part of those guidelines that we expect, they have to have their own liability insurance, that's a big one. They have to have their serve safe credentials. Those, that's the other big one and of course, they have to abide by the guidelines that we lay out for the kitchen itself.
Okay, thank you.
A quick question. Will they be able to sell product out of that area?
Not out of that area specifically, but the idea is to prep it there and either they go on a food truck or they go and deliver themselves or whatever it may be, but yeah, at this point, not, we, we hope that'll be another program moving down the line once we have the facility updated, but yeah, at this time, there won't be preparing or won't be selling out of that specific area.
Because that's kind of the Indy's Kitchen model, correct? Like they also?
Indy's Kitchen also has, we'll call it a ghost restaurant, right? They can prepare and sell at the restaurant. So yeah, the anticipation is that we'll have a cafe-style environment that multiple people can sell at one time out of that environment, so they could prep and then sell in the cafe. But obviously, that won't be until we do some reconstruction of the facility.
Make a mean ramen noodle salad.
The goal, just again, if anybody's paying attention, if you're talking to anybody that might be interested, the goal is not to price anybody out of the kitchen, so I do think we're, we set the, the costs at a very favorable, very doable price and obviously, we've got to cover our costs, so that's the main goal, but really, if anybody has any issues with the costs or they need to get their feet on the ground first, we certainly be willing to work with them to try to get, help lift anybody up that needs some assistance.
This is a great opportunity for Michigan City. I know six years ago, there were several people looking, so hopefully, if they're still in the market, they know about it.
Yeah, and great spot for food trucks. We are going to have locked storage for fresh foods and everything, that they will have their individual spot in the coolers. So if they, you know, need to store things, they need to cool things, they don't have their space at home, they'll have an opportunity to store and save it there for the rental fee as well.
Awesome, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, how's, what's the board's pleasure?
Move to approve?
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes, Ms. D. Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Next, fees for Safe Harbor Before School Care. Ms., Mrs. Johnstone.
Hello. I am here to propose a fee structure change for Safe Harbor Morning Care Program. This fall, we are ready to start accepting CCDF vouchers for our morning care fees. We've never done that before, even though we've been certified to do it. So in order to do that, we need to change our fee structure from a hourly or actually per half hour session is how we charge now. We're going to go to a weekly rate. The hourly, right now, if a family does the full program every day for the whole 6:00 to 8:30 is $37.50 a week. We're proposing for $28 a week as the across-the-board fee. There would, I would say there are about 20% of our families maybe who use close to or that full week and so we feel that $28 is a fair fee. I've done some research and I've compared price, I've compared fees for similar programs across the state and $28 does seem to be fair for a program similar to ours. Our budget analysis shows a total cost of our program of about $54,000 per year and $28 a week at the average number of students that we have now would give us about $64,000 annually. We will still, in the past, we've always done a sliding fee scale for our families who weren't able to, to pay those fees and we will still be able to do that according to my CCDF specialist. So families who don't qualify for vouchers but still struggle to pay the fees will still have, will still have an option for them. Any questions?
Is this for Little Wolves as well?
We hope to start Little Wolves. Right now, we're at four elementary schools. We hope to start at Little Wolves, but I have to find staff who'll do it. Staffing that position is the hardest position we have staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes. Thank you, Mrs. Johnstone. And looks like you're back up. Next.
Me again.
In random understanding, Michigan City Area Schools and Safe Harbor nurturing minds 2025-2026 school year.
Yes. I am proposing for Board approval, the, the MOU between Michigan City Area Schools and Safe Harbor. It's, I believe you all have a copy, but it's pretty much the same one that we've done in past years. We're still, the only, the only thing that we have changed is that we're now at Little Wolves where we haven't before, so we are now at 10 sites, but everything else, the agreement between us and the school district remains the same. Anybody have questions?
Don't look like it. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes. Thank you again, Mrs. Johnstone.
Thank you.
Next is Safe Harbor Temporary Staff Wage Increase. Mrs. Bildhouser.
Thank you. Tonight, we're requesting the Board's approval to use remaining funds between two grant years called Cohort 10 and Cohort 11 with Safe Harbor. This is modeled after similar what we did last year. It will not only use up the remaining funds, we have approval from the DOE to do this once the Board approves and it would allow student, or not students, staff members that worked for Safe Harbor during the 23, 24 school year and returned to work for Safe Harbor last year, so for the last two years, to receive a one-time pay increase and that would be paid in a stipend and the details are outlined further in the memo. Any questions on that?
No questions? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes, Ms. D. Thank you, Mrs. Bildhouser. Next is tentative 2026 budget calendar. Ms. Fulton.
Thank you. On tonight's agenda, I'm asking that we request the approval of the tentative 2026 budget calendar. June 30th is the deadline for the gateway submission of the pre-budget report. That is almost finished. I'm just waiting to calculate the estimated cash balances and the pension and the pension debt fund, so that'll be submitted by Monday. July and August is preparation of the 2026 budgets. In August of 2025, I don't have a date yet, but there's meetings with the DLGF. September 16th is when we submit the Budget Form 3, which is the budget rates, levies and the notice to taxpayers stating the date of the public hearing. On Septem, September 30th is our regular school board meeting and this will also be our public hearing, which is at 6:00 p.m. October 28th is also a regular board meeting and that will be to adopt the budgets. The deadline for adopting budgets is November 3rd. And on October 30th, one copy of the budget will be filed with the county auditor and then it will be submitted on gateway for the DLGF. December 31st is the statutory deadline by which DLGF must certify the 2026 budget tax rates and levies. So that is the tentative budget calendar for 2026. Any questions?
Does this budget cycle start to see funding changes from what happened downstate this year?
Those, those won't be in this budget year, no.
Thank you.
Only the changes with the funding for tuition support. That's the only thing we'll see, but not the property tax.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing no further questions, what is the board's pleasure?
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. D, that passes. Thank you, Mrs. Fulton. Last item of business, high ability grant. Mrs. Bildhouser.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm asking the Board's approval to accept high ability funds. These funds are used for students in grades one to 12. The Michigan City Area Schools has been awarded $54,942, of which $1,623 has to be used for identification, which is testing materials to qualify students for the program. Our plan this year is to implement the counseling, the differentiated counseling plan that a committee has worked on over the last two years to support high ability students and then also to continue providing training for our cluster teachers in grades one to three and also some of our general education teachers at the middle school that have high ability students integrated within the class as well. And then it'll also help support the AP tip-in affiliation fees for the high school. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes, Ms. D. Thank you again, Mrs. Bildhouser. We worked you tonight, huh? Next, any board statements and/or issues requiring action prior to the next board meeting?
I would. Quickly tonight, I would like to again mention the Ambassador Program. Signups for that are open, I believe, till the 1st of August. We're still looking for candidates. There's 20 slots at, out there for. There's twenty slots at, out there for our community members. We'd love to have you guys get a great behind-the-scenes tour and education of the Michigan City Area School System, really learn it from the inside out. So, educate M C dot net, you can find that application there. I noticed today, there's even a little pop-up message. Megan, if that's you or whoever that is, wonderful job there. If not, it's under the Community tab, there's a section for the Ambassador Program, so check that out. Also want to mention the Wizard of Oz that Dr. McCullough mentioned. That's going to be a fun show again this summer. Great cooperation between the community and the school system to put on an amazing summer program for the arts here in Michigan City that's essentially a cost-free option for parents to expose their kids to the arts from age seven to fourteen. You are really not going to find programs like this at the cost that we offer in Michigan City, but this is their biggest fundraiser of the year, and that is ticket sales. So, come on out Friday, Saturday, and Sunday are the shows. And then, on another note, I want to send condolences out to the family of Coach Brian Burkhart. He was our first football coach here at Michigan City High School, our last high school football coach at Elston High School. He recently passed away. So, thoughts and prayers to his family, his ex-players, friends, all that. And then I also noticed we had two other names kind of on the retirement list in athletics there, in Coach Wells and Coach Karpinski. We've had a great history with Karpinski's here in Michigan City. Coach Mike is, is not an exception to that. He did an amazing job with our football program. His dad spent a lot of years coaching at Elston High School, so happy retirement to Mike, and then also Coach Wells. It was great to have him his last few years here, and good luck in retirement, gentlemen. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so again, starting off, Dr. McCullough, thank you for your continued leadership and your board, I mean, and your cabinet. Thank you to our staff, teachers, students, and families. We've started summer, and it's getting hot. It's getting hot. I can, I have good things to say for this position, but my other one is getting hot. I can say that. But no, summers, we have a lot going on in summer in this community, and the school system continues to be a driving force behind, making sure our kids have still quality activities to make sure that they're doing the right things at their time away from full-time school. So, I'm excited about that. Welcome, Mrs. Meadows. Happy to have you here. Hope, if you need anything, let us know. But we're happy to have you here, and again, I think your contributions will be another good shiny point for our schools as we, especially for our C T E program as continues to build and go further, so welcome. And just stuff that we've had on the list tonight, we've had, we had, this is the first time we've had a busy business section like we did at many items, so a lot of good things still continue to go on. So, look forward to getting closer to school year. That means it's closer to football. That's my favorite time of the year. But we're getting close there, so looking forward to it, and I'm glad to know I don't have to be in a dunk tank at Back School Rally. I'm getting a little bit too old to get up and down on that thing, so I look forward to the Back School Rally without the dunk tank. I don't know if I'm going to get hit in the face with a pod, but guess it's better than the dunk tank, so. At least I get some, yeah, exactly. So, seeing that, thank you all for participating tonight, and hope to see you all next month. Meetings adjourned.